Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Welcome to our Bloomington City Council Study Session. Tonight is Monday, July 28th, 2025. Apologies for the late start. We had a little pre-meeting meeting, so we are five minutes late this evening. I apologize for that. We will, as I said, this is a study session. We have three items on our agenda that are discussion items, and no formal action is required in those, in those study items. Under our agenda, which is the approval of the agenda is our first item tonight, we have nothing under introductory consent, hearings, resolutions, ordinances, or organizational business council. Excuse me, under organizational businesses, we have item 5.1, the Bloomington Ferry Road Corridor Visioning Study. We have item 5.2, solid waste rates, and item 5.3, the liquor license discussion. And item six is adjournment, so we can get back out into this gorgeous, hot summer evening. Council, unless there are any additions or corrections, I would move approval of the agenda as stated.
I guess.
We got a motion and a second by Councilmember Don Alessandro to accept tonight's agenda as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0, and that's an opportunity to point out that Councilmember Nelson is not with us this evening. He is traveling. We will move on to our agenda, which is item 5.1. That's our first item, the Bloomington Ferry Road Corridor Visioning Study. Amy Maron from our Bloomington, City of Bloomington Assistant Traffic Engineer, and Philip Coolis, I think, is going to help us out with this as well. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, councils. Nice to see everyone tonight. So, a few years ago, we were before you with some pavement reconstruction work being considered on Bloomington Ferry Road, a few different segments that were starting to come up and needing attention. And at that time, the council had asked us to go back and take a look and develop a vision for this corridor. It's, it's had a lot of different purposes in the past, and Phil Coolis with SRF Consulting Group will go through that a little bit. He's going to talk a little bit about the history of this roadway and kind of the goals of this study. We wanted to take this opportunity tonight to make sure that the council feels that we are on track for what you had asked us to go take a look at, and then the next time we see you, we will be bringing back some preferred or recommended alternatives for this corridor. So, with that, if we can have the presentation pulled up?
All right. Yes, you're cool. It's welcome.
Good evening. Yes, thank you for having us here. Can it be made full screen or no? Or in presentation mode if possible? If not? Thank you. All right. So, we've got a quick agenda here. So, as Amy mentioned, we'll just go over what the project is as a whole, what we're trying to accomplish with it, go over the project goals that we've discussed and gone over with the tax, the technical advisory committee made up of various members of Bloomington Public Works and other agencies, as well as Hennepin County. Go over existing conditions, what we've learned about the corridor from doing an existing conditions analysis, public engagement. So, we've had one round of public engagement so far, so go over what we heard from the public at that. And then also provide an update on what we heard from the commission. So, we met with Planning Commission earlier this month, as well as the Sustainability Commission two weeks ago. So, go over that, and then just discuss next steps with where we're at today and how we'll get to the finish line. So, project overview, so Bloomington Ferry Road, it's on the western side of the city, just east of Trunk Highway 169. It used to provide a connection to the Minnesota, or over the Minnesota River prior to 169 being extended. It hasn't been a river crossing in quite some time now, approximately 20 years. So, the use of the corridor has changed. Before, it was a river crossing, which funnels a lot of traffic to one location. With that removal, traffic volumes have decreased, and they've stayed relatively the same over the past 20 years. Not a whole lot of room for development along the corridor or south of the corridor. So, volumes have stayed pretty consistent, but the use has changed here. What we're looking at is a 2.7 mile stretch, so just north of the Bloomington Ferry, pad crossing the, the bridge there, all the way up to Vaness and Enting at the north end. It primarily serves residential uses. There's just a lot of residential neighborhoods along the corridor, parks, recreation, as well as a few businesses just north of Old Chalky Road there on the south end. And as Amy had mentioned, pavement preservation projects had started back in 2021, recognizing there was a need for pavement rehab, pavement's starting to deteriorate. However, there's a lot of pavement out there. It's a four-lane roadway, which, as I mentioned, now volumes are a lot lower, so there's not as much need for all of that pavement. So, trying to be financially responsible and conscious of the decisions to maintain all that pavement. So, that initiated this study to figure out what is really needed out there, what's the recommended roadway layout, cross-section, to make sure we're making best use of public resources here. So, this study, the visioning study, kicked off earlier this spring, and really it's to come up with the recommended alternative design of the roadway that meets the current needs, as well as the future needs of the corridor. Right here is just an image of what's out there today, at least on the northern half, so you can see it's two lanes each direction with a shared use path and sidewalk as well on one side. So, it's a pretty built-out roadway. There's a lot of right-of-way out there right now, so this project is determining what's the best use of all that right-of-way, since we're not really constrained with the right-of-way. Trying to figure out what we can do with it. So, project goals, so these are five overarching core objectives. We have more detailed goals we'll show later, but essentially, the goals here are to right-size the corridor, come up with a design that meets the needs of various modes of transportation, vehicles, peds, bikes, while also building a sustainable and resilient infrastructure. So, something that can accommodate future rainstorms, reduces impervious area to really be more sustainable. Greenhouse gases, that's also an item that the city has taken initiative on of helping reduce, so that's a goal of the project. And then the enhanced pad crossings, that's really one of the core objectives here is recognizing there's vulnerable road users along the corridor, there's a trail along the corridor, so trying to make sure that we're being cognizant of that and design facilities that accommodate and help facilitate their movement. Quick overview on traffic conditions out here. So, as I mentioned, traffic volumes are lower than they used to be there, but they've been really steady for the past 20 or so years. We see daily traffic in the range of 3,500 to 7,000 out there, and just put that in context, I mean, a four-lane roadway typically starting to be looked at when you're 15,000-plus. So, we're well below that, indicating that there's definitely excess capacity out there from what's needed. So, we'll be looking at the potential to reduce lanes out there and use the right-of-way in a different use than necessary vehicle lanes. We also collected vehicle speeds out there to see what are people selecting to drive out there currently, and we do see some elevated speeds above the posted speed limit. Averages and 85th percentile speed, which is the speed that at least 85% of the vehicles are traveling at. Those are elevated in the 5 to 10 mile per hour range, so something to be cognizant of, something that we're interested in controlling and reducing here, recognizing that there's a lot of pedestrians and bicycles out there, so we're going to be cognizant of that. There's two signals out there, one at Vaness Street on the north end and one at 102nd Street at Countryside Park. So, those are our two signals that are being maintained and operated by the city currently. They do not meet warrants based on current traffic volumes, and they're fairly well below the warrants. They're not really near the threshold of needing a signal indicating that. There's a signal out there, but it's likely not needed to maintain and control traffic. Overall, the intersections operate well. We're not really seeing delays out there. Most people are able to make their movements that they're trying to relatively easy and unimpeded. And then also, for the most part, crashes are not elevated, except for at Bloomington Ferry Road and Linsum Drive. That is an intersection that there is elevated crash rate at, meaning there's more crashes occurring relative to similar intersections around the state, and that intersection's actually in the top five in the city for crash rate. So, it does stand out a little bit here as we look at crashes and how the intersection's performing.
If I could just ask a quick question, please. When you say you're using the word warrants as in it's not warranted, it's not needed, correct?
Correct.
Opposed to, from a police standpoint, a warrant or?
Oh, yeah.
You know, anything along those lines, but you, it doesn't meet, these signals really don't meet the need of having a signal there. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, exactly.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
Yep, no, good question. Anything else, I guess, while I'm paused? All right. So, as we mentioned, pet bikes is a big focus here. So, here's an existing conditions. I mean, for the most part, there are pedestrian and bicycle facilities along the corridor. I mean, there's continuous trail as well as sidewalk. There's the bike trail, the Highland Trail, which will be the future CP Rail Regional Trail from 106th Street, so just north of Old Chalky Road down to Ferry, down to the Ferry Bridge. So, along the corridor, it's pretty well, there's dedicated pedestrian and bicycle facilities crossing the corridor. So, going across Bloomington Ferry Road, it can be more challenging in the sense that there's not as many marked crosswalks there, particularly on the north half, once you get north of Pioneer Trail, the actual crossings of Bloomington Ferry Road are pretty sparse. Water resources, so this is also a focus here of the goals of sustainability, resiliency. So, the map here on the right is shown on the 100-year storm event, so a storm that you'd expect to occur once every 100 years, although these days with the rain we're getting, they are more frequent. The blue areas are where essentially there, there's flooding where the water limits go to, and down on the south end, right around Landau Lane, that's where you see the blue go off the roadway. That's showing that there's water, there's flooding right in that area. So, that's Landau Circle, Wyoming Circle, and Wyoming Way. So, there's properties in that area that during heavy storm events actually receive water, and they actually get flooding in their properties due to the water running off the road here and not being controlled. Shifting gears here, so public engagement, so we've held the first round of that, which that was really to gather input from the public, hear of their, the public's concerns, issues. The, the public, obviously, if they're out there driving, walking, biking it every day, they have a lot of insights into it, so want to make sure we, we heard from them to understand concerns and where we should be focusing. So, this occurred earlier this spring. There was an open house at Countryside Park right along the corridor back in May where we gathered input. We had roughly 80 people from the public attend, so we got a lot of good input from them. We had a lot of conversations. We also had a survey that we handed out where we could ask specific questions. So, that was well attended and got some good input, as well as Let's Talk Bloomington, which I'm sure many of you guys are familiar with, so I'll page that website that the, the city uses to provide updates and gather input on, or on projects from the public. So, that was also used, and that was also well visited by the public. So, there was over 1,000 people that visited the website, and just for reference, mailer was sent out to roughly 4,000 people or in businesses along the corridor. So, pretty happy with the 1,000 people visiting the website, and we had 35 unique people providing comments on the map you can see here. People could go on there, drop pins, provide comments on where they're seeing any issues or what their thoughts are. I mean, there were 60 comments left. So, overall, we're pretty happy with the input that we received from the public. And this side documents kind of key themes we heard from the public. People mentioned that, that there's higher speeds along the corridor. We heard a lot of people enjoy walking, biking along the corridor, but crossing of Bloomington Ferry Road can be challenging, particularly there's some stop signs that people commented on. A lot of drivers don't exactly stop at the stop signs, they do more rolling stops. So, the safety of pedestrians and bikes at crossing is something we'll want to pay attention to, we definitely heard that. A lot of people commented that they felt that it seems reasonable to reduce the lane of traffic. We were out there roughly in the, the 4 to 6 p.m. timeframe, so generally when volumes are higher, a lot of people are coming back, and it was pretty quiet out there. So, a lot of people commented that reducing lanes seems feasible and, and something that would make sense here. Roundabouts, that was brought up by several people. I'd say it's, you kind of get the mix always with roundabouts of some people support them, some people don't. I'd say out here, we definitely heard more favoritism, at least at particular locations for roundabouts, that they made sense at a lot of locations. As well as green infrastructure, there was definitely support for implementing green infrastructure and having vegetation out there that was maintained and provided benefits to the environment. So, overall, some good input that we received from the public that we're carrying forward into alternatives coming up here. So, as mentioned, we went out to Planning Commission and Sustainability Commission earlier this month, presented a PowerPoint pretty similar in locations, there's a bit more detail, but we basically wanted to gather input on the goals of the project, to make sure we're, we're on the right track, as well as we start to look at what the actual corridor could be, specific design elements. So, we shared some slides that we'll have up here, and we'll summarize the feedback that we received at both those commissions. So, the first one was on goals. So, as I showed previously, there on the left, we had those five core objectives. We broke those down into more details and ones that we could actually measure through various analysis techniques. So, we have water resources, sustainability, mobility, and cost as the four overarching areas, and then we have more specific goals under each one of these that we'll be able to evaluate alternatives against and see how they, they compare and contrast against each other. But, these are the goals here. I mean, a lot of them are at least water resources, sustainability. Those are really trying to build a sustainable and resilient roadway, and then mobile and cost gets to making sure we're, we're building infrastructure that supports the safe and efficient movement of vehicles, pedestrians, bikes, and then while also being financially conscious of, of this, obviously recognizing initially this visioning study was spurred on by not wanting to necessarily rehab the pavement out there and maintain more, more lanes of traffic than necessary. So, that's, that's a goal here to make sure that kind of the original purpose of why we're taking a look here is, is being considered. And then here we have input that we received. So, at the top, there's the Planning Commission inputs, and then at the bottom, Sustainability Commission input. From Planning Commission, no new goals were added, and really they supported the overall goals of trying to be more sustainable, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, building something that's sustainable, and really utilizing the right-of-way to meet the needs. Really didn't, don't see a need, for the most part, to obtain additional right-of-way. There's a lot of right-of-way out there, so really trying to make sure we're, we're using that efficiently and not needing additional right-of-way where it's not necessary. Sustainability Commission, a lot of comments were related to vegetation support for that, reducing the heat island effect, which is ever prevalent in days like today. So, reducing that, as well as building something that's environmentally conscious in terms of the materials. And then flooding was also something that was mentioned, that that should be one of the top priorities here, that when there's flooding in the roadway, that's extending off the roadway into adjacent properties, that's impacting the, the public, impacting residents of Bloomington directly. There was also a comment about including residential satisfaction in the goals, and at this point, we're gathering input from the public, but that's kind of something that's can be more challenging to directly measure. So, we will be going back out to the public here in the fall with alternatives and gathering input, so we're capturing it that way. Then we presented three lane concepts. So, right now, we're envisioning reducing the number of lanes out there, where it's two lanes each direction, down to one lane each direction, but that can look many different ways. So, what we have here are three different ways of what a three lane is. So, that's one lane each direction with then turn lanes or a two-way left turn lane. So, the top one is a three lane with a two-way left turn lane, so that's where you, you can get in there and make your left turns from there, or you can also turn in there. Typically, more prevalent in areas where there's a lot of driveway accesses or a lot of business access points. So, 86th Street's an example there. Cedar Lake Road is the one here in the middle, so in St. Louis Park, that's a three lane with turn lanes where everything's narrowed up, and there's one each lane, or one lane each direction, but the turns occur from a dedicated left turn lane, so you can see that up there. And then, a third option is more of a three, a parkway where there's one lane each direction, turn lanes, but then there's a wide grass median in the middle, and an example of that is 98th Street here in Bloomington, just west of Normdale Boulevard. So, presented three different options for what a three lane could look like, and sent you from Planning and Sustainability Commission, I mean, for the most part, the support was to a three lane section that has the one lane each direction and then the, the turn lanes, so really narrowing up the footprint and then keeping the green space on the outside of the roadway. Thought on this is that it can facilitate pedestrian and bicycle maneuvers more easily, and then it provides that green space that can be more usable for the public. If it's in the, the median, it might not be as usable, people are often across the roadway, and then it's in the middle of the road, which people aren't maybe necessarily looking to hang out in the middle of the road, so by having it off to the side, it provides more, more useful space, we can better use the right-of-way to, for other opportunities. Bicycle treatments, so the next couple of slides here, we're now into more specific design elements, recognizing pets bikes is a, a big focus here. So, we presented the various options here, so there's mixed-use trail, on-street bike facilities, one-way cycle tracks, which are again off-road, but they're one, one-way each side of the road, and then a two-way cycle track, which is, there's bikes going both ways on one side of the road. So, for the most part here, the facilities along Bloomington Ferry Road are pretty good. There's dedicated, or bike facilities out there. So, one input was at least maintaining that level of bike facilities that are out there, but not necessarily over-designing it. There's comments on traffic volumes aren't that high out there. Speeds, they are elevated, but it's not a 55 mile per hour roadway, so the balancing act here of accommodating them, designing for them, but then not over-design the facilities for something that might not be needed. So, getting back to sort of the sustainability piece of it, of trying to right-size the solution for what's out there. And then sustainability, provide input of separated bike facilities that are, that are out there right now, that if there's the right-of-way available, that they should be accommodated, or designed for dedicated facilities, and then just be cognizant of how the facilities are cleared of snow, that if they're not designed appropriately, it can be more challenging in the winter time to clear, and then that can lead to a potentially not getting cleared, or it's more challenging and people might not use it as much. Pedestrian treatments, so we presented a few different options there, RFBs, which is the rectangular rapid flashing beacon, those are the bright flashing signs that you might see out there. Mixed-use trails, as well as refuge islands, where you have a concrete median in the middle, allows people to cross one direction, look the, look for traffic, and then cross the other direction. So, we presented these options. I mean, for the most part, the input was, let's make sure we're designed for pedestrians and maintaining what's out there today at least, and hopefully improving that. Planning Commission also mentioned curb extensions, which is on the bottom there, might not necessarily be the right fit for the quarter, depending on how it's designed, since that could pinch the bike lane and, and really reduce that space. So, again, just kind of balancing the act here of what's needed for the conditions out there. Intersection treatments, so we, there's various options here, signal, mini roundabout, stop signs, and then full-blown roundabouts. Right now, there's a mix of stop signs out there and signals, so you can see on the left there, those are actually both images of Bloomington Ferry Road. So, right now, there's various intersection traffic control. Planning Commission didn't rule anything out, they basically Planning Commission didn't rule anything out. They basically said, let the traffic numbers and traffic analysis dictate what's needed out there. Roundabouts were seemed like a good locate or good type of control at lots of locations, particularly Pioneer and Bloomington Ferry Road. So where the quarter goes from east, west, right there to north, south. That's one of the busier intersections along the corridor. So that was brought up as a a good location for a roundabout. And sustainability convention has an interest in eliminating traffic control that's not needed and aligning control with what's needed, getting at the two signals that are out there today that aren't necessarily warranted. That's additional maintenance that is required in terms of power if poles get hit during snow events. So really trying to main make sure what's out there is needed. I'm in right sizing the solutions here. And the final item here that we received input on from the plant or planning and sustainability commissions are green infrastructure. I mean, for the most part, both commissions support this or looking at ways to reduce in previous areas and build infrastructure that can help reduce the heat island effect, reduce flooding, better manage storm. There's definitely interest to use the right way to be more of a place making, be more of a place that people want to be. So looking at opportunities to use that right way to draw people to the corridor, whether it's linear parks, like hopscotch was brought up as a potential that could be incorporated. So really trying to use the right way that's available to for other uses, other than just moving vehicles, pets, bikes, making it more of a place that people want to be. Salt use, that's a goal of the city as well. And that was one of our goals that we had there. That was mentioned at playing commission. There was definitely interest in tree planting to for greenhouse gases as well as reducing salt use. So everyone seems really on board with building a road that's sustainable and resilient. So we just went through a lot of information on the project as a whole, as well as all the input gathered from the commissions. So now we have couples or bullet points here, questions for council members here to see. Are we on the right track? Is there anything we're missing? Is there anything that you'd like us to consider before we really get into the point now of putting pen to paper and developing alternatives that we can start to evaluate against the goals we developed and present to the public in September?
Very good. Thank you. Council, some possible talkers there, some talking points, but I'm sure folks have ideas and suggestions based on what you've heard. Also, anyone like to chime in? Councilmember De La Sondro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a quick question. I think that when we first spoke about this a while back, I wasn't sure that all of Bloomington Ferry Road was in consideration for this particular study. Number one, do I remember that correctly? I feel like we were talking about just the one section for the at the first time.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember De La Sondro, it was definitely the pavement sections we were looking at for work were more limited, but we're studying it as an entire corridor concept to make sure that we have a plan that can be implemented through several different projects.
Great. That that's a that's a good idea. The reason I asked that question is because I'm I, you know, I'm one of the things I'm most interested in is that we, if we're going to do things like multimodal transportation, bike lanes and things like that, that they actually have a traverse you know, an ability to traverse traverse a portion of the city that makes sense if you're just going to do one small piece of it and we're not connecting the throughways for that kind of transportation. We end up in the same place we are in a lot of ways in the city now where we have some north, south and some east, west, but nothing that looks really cohesive. And so this to me feels like a pretty cohesive end to end, north, south study on the west side. What exactly is, if you can answer this, it says it's two point seven miles. Would that be the same? Would that be the same amount of of bike lane that you would get approximately for a project like this? Would it would would the bike lane traverse that entire two point seven miles as well? Is that the goal?
I think so. Yes. Yep. That's what's out there today. And that's what we'd be looking to maintain, just enhance.
Okay. Forgive me if you have it in here and I did not see it, but do we have rider number or a biker numbers on the current path today?
We have pedestrian and bicycle numbers at the intersections. We don't have that in here, but we do have that information.
Okay, it'd be good to see that, I think, just to understand what we'd be talking about. And then what would be the potential? If you can map it out, the potential increase in that kind of traffic that you might believe we would see if we did make it more continuous. If that makes sense. I don't have any other questions. I'll I'll. Those are just the thoughts I had off the top of my head. I'm happy to make comments after other folks have. I don't want to monopolize the time. Thanks.
Other folks? Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm excited about this because I drove this road for five years going to work back and forth. And I've seen people going fifty five on this road because it's wide. You can see everything. There's very little traffic. So people just go and before you know it, you're going forty five, fifty miles an hour. So I'm excited to see this. And then this weekend, on my way to the second to four kid birthday parties we had, I drove through this road again for the first time in a while. And then a random thought came to my head. It's very out of left field. There's a stretch between one oh six and one oh second. And I wondered if we went down to two lanes, could we sell this land off so we don't have to maintain it and people can build houses on this? Because as we drove through, it was incredible how wide both lanes plus plus the median, plus the four, like the two bike lanes, plus the sidewalks, right? It's so wide here. And I hardly ever see anyone drive on this road. Is there room to make room for housing from one oh six to one oh second on the west side of that? Random thought out of left field, but as we're trying to find solutions for the missing middle housing issues that are plaguing the country, the state, the city, that is an option we might consider looking at to save us on costs, to recoup the money that we have invested into this, but then allow homeowners to actually be in this space. Random thought. But otherwise, no, I I think this is great, reducing lanes, making it more manageable, supporting the traffic that's actually there. I think that's light. For five years I've driven it, I think I can count on one hand how many times I've stopped there. Not a huge fan of roundabouts myself personally, but I understand the appeal. Overall, I think this makes sense, reducing the damage from rain runoff to property owners, allowing it to be just a more peaceful, more enjoyable space. Makes sense to me. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Others? And I think to to build off of Councilmember Muah's thoughts on just on the financial side of things, you did list the capital cost and the long term maintenance cost in one of your early slides. And I do think that's something to be considered and in each of these different pieces, something to be considered, whether it's the green space. You know, how would that be managed and 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 maintained? You know, what's easier to plow is the the three lane with the center turn lane? I mean, is that easier to clear than it would be if it was what we saw on Cedar Lake Road in St. Louis Park? You know, what? All those different pieces, I think, need to come into play as we consider this and and look at different ways of doing this. And as I said, I know you, they were at least listed there, but I think as we dig into this a little bit more, those all encompassing costs, not only the capital cost of building it, but what it's going to take to take care of it over the course of years as well. Others, counsel? Councilmember Rivas.
My question is not in regards to the width or any of that, if I may ask it. I'm just concerned about the public engagement. As I was reading, one thousand and eighty people participated or went to the website, but only thirty five of them actually have some input into it, right? So what are you planning to do to get more people engaged for the open houses or whatever you're planning in September?
Councilmember Rivas, it's a really good question and it's always a challenge. You know, we we really want to gather feedback. I'm actually impressed with the numbers that we've gotten so far, just when we were looking for preliminary information from users. So I thought it was probably on the higher end of participation. So we would, where our plan is to stay with the same procedure where we're having the public open house. We're also putting the information on the Let's Talk Bloomington page and allowing opportunities for comments and questions through that as well. But we are certainly open to more suggestions if you have some.
If I may, I know I have made comments on regards to making the comments available to the public. And I I know that the city does an amazing job in providing ways to the public so that the public can participate in these surveys. However, we do have a lot of older generation, people that don't seem to find it easy, as easy as it is to scan a phone or or a QR code on a phone or or whatever it may the case may be. For some people, that's extremely difficult and it makes it impossible for them to participate. So I I would suggest that we come up with some old fashioned ways of providing the entire population a way to participate in these surveys. I I know it's not easy. It's not cheap. But I I mean, I've I find it, you know, from one thousand and eighty, you know, you find it encouraging. I look at it from a different point of view. Thirty five only make comments is it's a kind of detriment in my point of view. But that's all I got. Thank you.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So was it only thirty five or you said there the open house had more, right?
Correct. We had about eighty people at the open house and we had opportunities to leave comments on, you know, on on all of the boards at that location and interact with, I think, five staff members were there as well. So we did, you know, have conversations and have heard from a lot, a significant number of people and we can combine, compile all those comments and make sure that those are all provided to the council as well.
And did you do mailers to the surrounding, just like?
We did actually. Yeah, we covered a pretty large area. Our mailing included four thousand addresses. So it was, excuse me, at least a half mile on each side of Bloomington Ferry Road along the entire corridor.
So you sent mailers to four thousand houses?
Yeah.
Okay, so there was also the mailer component that wasn't on this side. So, okay. And it sounds like you'll do the same for the future open houses.
Correct. Yep.
Um, I I think this was a, this has been great. I agree with everything that's on it. And I look forward to seeing what that further community engagement and input looks like. The only other thing I could think of that may be missing is just that, you know, as we've expanded creative placemaking to be citywide, that this might be an opportunity to incorporate some of those elements along the corridor in some kind of ways. I'm not talking like thinking about the fiscal, you know, impact, not anything crazy, but where we can, you know, paint utility boxes and do other cute things like that, I think, would be good for the corridor. Thank you.
Councilmember Lomond.
Thank you, Mayor. It's always difficult to get folks to turn out. You might get, you know, fifty five and then you want a hundred or something like that. So maybe I don't know. One former person who used to sit up here used to say, put a, you know, put a tractor out there, do some construction and that'll get get a big turnout. So so it all depends on kind of, you know, what you're looking for. So, you know, and I I mentioned this when I was at the Sustainability Commission. When we look at those core kind of elements, you know, you know, when we look at the street itself, I mean, and I it kind of goes without saying, but you know, you kind of say, okay, you got enhancing pedestrian crossings. And I know from the perspective by which that this body kind of asked the question, I just didn't want to lose that overall sense of, you know, if we were to hit a hundred percent in all five of these areas, what are the residents and the businesses think about this overall project as we're kind of looking at it? So we don't lose sight of that. And so that's that's kind of one of my main concerns. You know, certainly if you're hitting all these, we would assume that would happen. But you know, sometimes all those things get missed, you know, when you're not looking at that as a as an independent kind of thing. So I just want to be sure that we're we're looking at that as an overall goal. What I mean by that is resident satisfaction or business satisfaction in terms of moving through that corridor. So then as we kind of look at this, you know, you know, the mayor mentioned earlier about, you know, capital expenses. One of the thoughts that kind of came to my mind is I I wanted to go through this exercise because I think we always talk about making our roadways more sustainable and what it would take to kind of do this. And I think this looks great and I love it, but what scares me is sometimes the cost of doing these things. And so my question is, and I'm not necessarily looking for a response today, how replicable is this? You know, and we're kind of looking at, you know, this this smaller area, maybe the entire corridor. If we try to move from corridor to another corridor, try to do this, what does that what does that look like? Is there a way to combine these things together? You know, are there other areas where we could do this together to make it more cost effective? So those are some of the things that I'm kind of thinking about as I kind of kind of work work through this area. I I agree with my colleague here in terms of, you know, the housing piece. But I'm very concerned about if you put housing in that area, will we increase flooding or make a flooding problem? So I want to want to be careful of that. But if there's some way to kind of tackle both, I would love to do that. I really like that idea. I think that's a great idea. And then I guess finally, you know, as we look throughout all of this, this project, and when we get it done, I just want to be sure that we're kind of looking to the long term. Just making sure that whatever we do or whatever we craft with these these core objectives and whatever we do with this corridor, that we're just kind of being really mindful of not only just that corridor, but the things that connect into that corridor and what the impact is of changing that or making reductions there. So love what love what it looks like and I'm looking forward to seeing kind of, you know, what what happens kind of going forward. But you know, at some point, we got to start talking about how much this costs. And that was kind of scary when we originally came into this. So I'd like to get back to that as soon as possible, too.
Appreciate it.
Councilmember De La Sondro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you don't mind, I'll make my comments now. So so any project goals that I think that you've missed? I don't think so. I think that I think that one of the one of the opportunities that maybe we could articulate would be the the way that it benefits the city, right? So there's lots of ways that it could benefit the city from from all of your the items here. So if we get closer to the idea, being sure that we understand the specific ways that these things will happen as opposed to like, they're gonna happen. It's like, no, no, we expect to reduce X by ten percent. We reduce Y by five percent, whatever. So getting kind of specific about that if possible. And and then in terms of treatments or design elements, I'm a fan of the idea of using this as an opportunity for us to to be forward thinking about some of the new materials that are out there for road pavement and everything. When I had, you know, my, I've been for a long time on council here, speaking about the the idea of trying to cut the cost of our of our road maintenance. And we we have gotten really good at that. We we know we're at a point where we've squeezed as much, you know, water out of the P M P program as we probably can in terms of any kind of bloat there, which I think is wonderful. You guys have done a great job. So I'm off that hobby horse now. And I'm on a different one, I guess, which is, I think, where we go next in terms of looking at opportunities for road maintenance is in these new materials. And even the conversation I had during our our walkthrough of of all of our infrastructure needs a couple of months ago, talked a little bit about the opportunities for potentially looking at that. So I'd love to know if we were planning on making and taking and using a particular, you know, surface or or making some interesting recyclable use decisions like some of the pulverized concrete and other things like that you see being used in sustainability initiatives that might be good for something like this. So I'd love to see that. And then again, how that is offsetting not just our for our sustainability goals, but also for the cost maintenance over time. If I remember correctly, we were talking about because we're going to reduce the width of the road, that road maintenance itself becomes less expensive, which is great. That's offset to some degree, like Mr. Mayor said, with the cost of the things that are we're going to put in place, whether that's parks or boat, you know, bicycle stuff or whatever. So the other area of of opportunity for us is to understand that that's a net positive, right? That ultimately, regardless of the decisions that we make, how close are we getting to a net positive benefit to the city on a cost basis? And so I'd really love to see that. And then lastly, the area where I think that I'd like to see some exploration would be, you know, if if there are things that we're not able to do in that area, because, you know, that's that's an area of the city that's it's kind of an interesting area, right? You have so much happening at Highland and then you have Dred Scott and those are like two big places where people congregate and spend a lot of time. And then you kind of go between those two and not really do anything in them. There's a couple of parks, of course. And one, I know there's a park across along Bloomington Ferry. But but understanding and incorporating some of maybe the parks master plan ideas is because of what we're doing here, does that particular, I can't remember the name of the park that's along there, forgive me, it starts with a C.
Countryside.
Countryside Park. Thank you. Is that is is this country park? Is that, is, does Country Park, Countryside Park get elevated as a place for us to look to do some of our Mark's, Parks Master Plan work because we're making this change too? So trying to, to combine the strategic initiatives of the, of the, the city a little bit to say, you know, can we, can we do something, we maybe weren't thinking of Countryside Park for this, but maybe Countryside Park becomes a better place to do this because we have this new, this new plan for the area. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilor, is there anything else to bring to this conversation? Councilmember, knowing that we're pushing fifty minutes on our first item tonight and we still have two more to go.
And I'll be very brief.
Please.
Roundabouts, I'm interested in seeing those moves to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next steps.
Yeah, next steps. So we're going to be meeting here as a technical advisory committee next Monday, going over everything we've heard from the commissions, from city council here tonight. And then presenting cross-sections, so a range of cross-sections of what the roadway could be. Gathering input on those, kind of going through preliminary screening to narrow that down to three alternatives to carry forward and see what that would actually look like throughout the entire corridor. So August is going to be a pretty busy month here in terms of evaluation of alternatives, developing them. September, going back out to the public to present them, gather their inputs. And then ultimately screen them against all the criteria that we've developed, the goals, and then present them back out to the Planning Sustainability Commission, City Council for, for input and then recommendation of the alternative to move forward.
Very good.
Appreciate all the input tonight.
Anything else, council? Very good. Thank you much. Appreciate you being here. Thanks. Second item on our agenda tonight is item five point two, discussion item regarding solid waste rates. Laura Horner, our Solid Waste Program Coordinator is here. I'm Scott Anderson, welcome.
Mayor, City Council, good evening. My name is Laura Horner. I'm the city's Solid Waste Program Coordinator. And I'm joined this evening by Scott Anderson, our Utility Superintendent, and also joined by Dr. Lisa Skumatz and Ann Gibbs, who are joining us virtually this evening with Skumatz Economic Research Associates. And we'll refer to them as SARAH tonight for, for short. Okay, so I've got this too. So we're here this evening to seek council direction on our proposed 2026 solid waste rate recommendations that include a stronger financial incentive between garbage cart sizes as well as the addition of the every other week small garbage cart service level. And as you'll recall, last June, council directed staff to bring forward an enhanced pay-as-you-throw rates for consideration for 2026. And the goal of these pay-as-you-throw rates is to encourage waste reduction by strengthening that financial incentive to choose a smaller garbage cart size. So the approach supports several important objectives. We know that as garbage disposal costs continue to rise sharply, our aim is to keep those prices affordable for our residents, but also motivate more waste diversion through recycling and composting. And just for some context, currently, our residential garbage is processed at the Hennepin Energy Recovery Center, HERC, where it's incinerated. The disposal cost at HERC has risen fairly sharply in just the last five years by thirty-four percent. So it was fifty-eight dollars a ton in 2019, seventy-eight dollars a ton in 2024. At the same time, landfill disposal costs continue to increase significantly, driven by limited landfill space and conversations that council has been a part of through the Burnsville landfills. And although recycling and organics processing costs have also increased, they increase at a slower rate than garbage. Those services also benefit from no taxes and they help to reduce the burden that we put on the waste-to-energy facility. So that could potentially slow future increases at HERC as well. I think we're just getting our consultants online. My guess. Technical difficulties, you've got to love them. But so in, in short, if we can design a rate structure that encourages residents to generate less waste and use our recycling and organics programs, we can really help get to our environmental goals as well as reduce long-term costs for residents. The strategy is really in line with the city's strategic priorities around sustainability and waste reduction. Over the past years, notably, we've added curbside organics recycling. So this does help residents really divert more of their trash. Finally, we've heard from both council and community members a desire to reflect lower waste generation in our rate structure. So this includes those households that are zero wasters, smaller households and residents that are on fixed incomes who just produce very little trash. So there's several things that a pay-as-you-throw rate structure helps us accomplish. I'll briefly review the, our background, the timeline that's brought us to where we are for tonight's recommendations. As we get that slide up, I can start. But just briefly, this started back in 2023. The Sustainability Commission recommended a review of the city's solid waste rate structure to better support waste reduction and diversion. Then in Q1 and Q2 of 2024, staff conducted a robust solid waste rate study with SARAH. That included an in-depth field analysis of waste generation in the carts, resident surveys, listening sessions, and a review of case studies around the country. Based on that, several different rate scenarios were developed and evaluated. And in June of 2024, those were presented to council. And council provided that initial direction in support of the stronger incentive garbage rate model that included pursuing the every other week garbage service level for small carts beginning in 2026. So then in Q3 and Q4 of 2024, we entered into our negotiations with the haulers consortium to align the contract terms with the direction that we received from council. I'll note that one of the big changes in that is a transition to direct payment for our garbage disposal, which really increases the transparency and it allows us to better reflect our actual costs in garbage rates. So based on those negotiated terms, in Q1 and Q2 of 2025, we've updated those rate recommendations to reflect the disposal costs. And we've worked with SARAH to provide us with some updated recommendations. And just for a little bit of context before I turn it over to SARAH, I wanted to just run through how we currently structure our solid waste rates. So under our existing system, the garbage rates are really based solely on the prices that the haulers consortium charges the city for each cart size, plus the taxes and fees, and a small fixed administrative fee that covers the city's admin and education and billing costs. So residents can already choose between a small, medium, and large garbage cart. And the pricing does increase a little bit with each cart size. That's pay-as-you-throw and that's actually required by state law. However, the price difference between the carts is relatively small and it doesn't provide much of a financial incentive, if any, to really divert waste or downsize your carts. And quickly, when it comes to recycling and organics, all residents pay that same rate regardless of how much they put in their recycling or organics or if they use the services. And that state statute requires residents who recycle can't be charged more than those who don't. So this is consistent with state law. So with these rate recommendations, our goal has been to try to recalibrate that pay-as-you-throw model to offer that stronger rate incentive. And the challenge is finding the sweet spot, so the rates are high enough to encourage the reduction, but still generate the revenue that we need to run our programs. So we, again, as I've mentioned, are working with SARAH to update those rates. And I, that team includes Dr. Lisa Skumatz and Ann Gibbs. And Dr. Skumatz is the nation's leading expert on pay-as-you-throw systems. She's consulted with the US EPA for several years and she's worked with dozens of cities nationwide on solid waste rate structures. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Skumatz and she will provide just a brief refresher on the pay-as-you-throw rate structure and present those updated rate recommendations for your consideration this evening.
Good evening, Dr. Skumatz. You here?
Can you hear me?
Welcome. Good evening.
You can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, thanks very much, Ms. Horner, Mr. Anderson, mayor and councilmembers. My colleague, Ann Gibbs, and I are here to discuss the work we've been doing on Bloomington's updated pay-as-you-throw rates. Okay. The next slide tells you that, some background on why we're pursuing more enhanced pay-as-you-throw incentives. It's because the city has a strong interest in reducing waste and increasing recycling and organics collection. And studies around the country show that the most cost-effective method to increase diversion is pay-as-you-throw. It's simply a change in rate incentives and billing, but it doesn't require any new trucks and it's also required in the state. What about pay-as-you-throw? Well, why is it so cost-effective and so effective? Well, how it works is via the basic principle that you get a higher bill if you use more trash service, much like you have a higher bill if you use more electricity or gas or water or so on. It provides an incentive to reduce and divert materials to be able to use a smaller, less expensive can. And it's a change in billing and with, you know, that, that supports the services you already have in place. And unlike recycling, it encourages reduction beyond recycling. It encourages three effects. In the middle slide, we see that the total of three effects is actually a reduction of seventeen percent less going to the landfill. That is, a third of that goes to recycling, a third of it to organics, and a third of it to source reduction. And that is because pay-as-you-throw does not just encourage any one of those, but it says whatever legitimate thing you can do to reduce what's in your trash can, you get a reward for that. It encourages all of those three behaviors. The analysis shows that it is the most cost-effective of more than fifteen different options that cities might undertake. Options like collection frequency changes, separate versus combined, you know, recycling programs, adding new materials to recycling, bans or mandates or other changes. Pay-as-you-throw is the most cost-effective way to get additional diversion. Now, it's not just to change rates and magically things happen. You, you need to do it in a best practice kind of way. One is that the rates need to be sufficiently strong. If you have a rate incentive that's too low, then people will just continue to oversubscribe. It's almost like having, you know, if you, if you charge just a dollar or so more for a second can, people won't make that change. If you charge, it turns out to be somewhere on the order of five dollars more for that next can size, people do pay attention to that and change their behavior. That also works out to about fifty to eighty percent more for twice as much service. You don't, we find that people don't pay attention if it's less than about fifty percent more costly for twice as much service. That is a move from, say, a thirty gallon can to a sixty gallon can. But you don't have to charge double either, even though it's twice as much service. You get about the same effect if you charge about eighty percent more. So there's a sweet spot, as Laura was talking about. You also have to make sure that you have convenient recycling opportunities. You don't want to charge people more for more trash and then say, you know, find someplace to put it or illegally dump. You want to make sure there are convenient options for recycling and diversion. You also want to make sure that there's service level options for small disposers. If people have already gone down to, they say, the thirty, thirty-five gallon or thirty gallon can, can we provide some options for those who are even willing to do more? And so that's one of the things that's an item in our, in our recommendation here. You want to make sure that there are minimum barriers to recycling and to diversion and that there's really strong outreach and explanation of how the program and system can work for customers. And then, of course, you always want to have an evaluation of success to make sure that you continue to refine the program so it's better and better. Bloomington's current solid waste program is already a strong program. You already have pay-as-you-throw. You're not starting from ground zero. You have strong and optimized diversion programs and management options. So you already have recycling. You already have yard waste. You already have food waste. So it's a really well-managed system and you have those options ready to be used. You have a network of quality supporting services like, like your cleanups and so on. And you have very strong engagement, a real focus. And that, the conclusion to us is, it's your system is ripe and ready to be refined. The things that we considered doing, we're looking at the fact that your current pay-as-you-throw incentive is only about four dollars extra for us for twice as much service or only eighteen to thirty-four percent more for twice the garbage volume. You have, you do have integrated services and charges and a fixed fee. But fixed fees can make things, can mute that, that incentive. But we've pulled the garbage out and can show you that, that garbage service is getting a strong incentive. We are proposing introducing a second, a smaller service option, which is every other week of the small, small garbage can service. And we think that this new system will lead to a significant increase in diversion. Now, it's not that we didn't, we, we also did a lot of local data collection and tailored modeling for Bloomington. We did a set-out survey, going out and inspecting how full people's cans were and how, how much they were recycling. And also a customer web survey so that people could respond on some of their preferences. The results of that survey found that garbage carts are only about half-full now. So people are oversubscribing. They're, they have, they currently have a can that is bigger than what they need to use. The survey also showed there was a substantial willingness by customers and ability for them to divert more food and yard waste. And every other week garbage was acceptable to households. We, the modeling also took into account your updated contract, city contract and city services and cost structure. And we used this information to model the potential impacts of more recycling and diversion from your, from incentivized rates. The incentivized rates have three components to figuring out how much those rates need to be. What are your new costs? What cans will people subscribe to, small, medium, and large? And what incentive levels do you want to place in that fifty to seventy percent sort of sweet spot? And that's set by policy. Next slide. So what's, we'll take a minute on this slide because this one's a little bit complicated. And here, what we're trying to figure out is, how do we figure out how many customers are going to sign up for which size of can? That's a really critical part in the equation to figure out what the new rates are. The left-hand bars are the current subscription and the green is current, is the thirty-five gallon cart that people get now. Or they choose the sixty-five gallon cart, which is the blue, and the purple is the ninety-six gallon cart. You can see, you know, they're not exactly even. There are some fewer on the thirty-five gallon than on the, the larger carts, but you get some idea of that, of that distribution. As I noted, though, that people are subscribed to about fifty percent more service than they actually are, are using. So current, current use show, that current usage column, the second one from the left, shows the, what customers currently, that they currently subscribe to more service volume than they're using. And so, in fact, a good chunk of people under the current system could be subscribed to its every other week thirty-five gallon can, that orange at the bottom. Or some of those sixty-fives could be at thirty-five and so on and so forth. So what they're really using, instead of two-point-two average cans, is really they're only using about one-point-seven average cans. So even with no change, people could right-size or move to that subscription level that's described under current usage. In our projections, we looked at how much could people reduce if we put in new carts? And we think that they could reduce something like fifteen percent of the tonnage that they're putting out now. And also what could they do, there's two effects. One is that full diversion, fifteen percent more, and then compaction. They can squish their, the stuff into the carts to get it into smaller carts as well. If we assume that whole strong reaction with the math and the compaction and so on, we get that third column, which shows a fair number of people. get that third column, which shows a fair number of people on that 35-every-other-week orange bar, as well as, you know, quite a lot fewer than we start out with in that 90, 95-gallon cart. But that's still not all of it. We'd like to figure out what is our expected reaction, because the, the strong reaction is, you know, fully, fully compacting and, and reducing 15%, but we know that from psychology, people aren't, aren't always that excited about going to every-other-week trash collection. They've been using weekly trash collection for years and years and years, and they're a little nervous about it. So we tend not to see people take full advantage of that. We also looked at the subscriptions that we found in other towns in the region, and in that case, we found there was a little bit more balance between the blue and the green than, than might be expected from pure math. So people are being a little bit more circumspect about going down to lower cans, because what if we had that party? What about Christmas time? Things like that. So they like to take, they'd like to be a little bit conservative. So what we used was the expected reaction in conducting our rates calculations. If it turns out that, you know, there is some revenue risk to that, if we assume that, you know, some of those large cans are, in a sense, subsidizing some of the smaller cans, we don't have, what we, we want to make sure that we're able to cover that, and we set rates based on that can size distribution. But if, in fact, people were really aggressive and they go, oh, yeah, let's go down, let's, you know, race to the bottom and get those every-other-week carts and so on, then we do run a little bit of revenue risk. If subscription rates actually, in the real world, turn out to be towards a stronger reaction line, we would have a revenue risk of about $350,000 a year. That's about $100, $1.31 per household per month. But the state, but we've worked with the city, and there is capital reserve available to offset that if that risk was to occur. We do expect that last, last bar, but we just wanted to give you an idea of what kind of risky, that, you know, we wanted to do due diligence and look at what revenue risks could, could evolve. Next slide. So the, what we've got on this slide is a comparison of the new rates, which are in the second, second column of numbers, which is $7.80 for a 35-gallon, $10.41 for 35, 18.21 for 65, and 26.02 for 95 gallons. Now, you notice that the rates are lower than the projected 2026 rates for the lower cans and higher for the higher cans. That's that being a little bit more aggressive about the rate incentive to try to drive people to, to be more, to be more careful about how much they recycle and get stuff out of the can in a consistent way that allows them to use smaller cans. The rate incentives are, you know, you pay 75% more for that second can, that 30, 65 versus the 35-gallon can, and you'll note that the dollar differentials are not, no longer about $4 between the 35 and 60, 65-gallon cans, but now they're closer to $8. So people are expected to actually move, move to those lower can sizes. Overall, and we also show here, so you see that the rates themselves go down for the lower cans and go up for the higher cans. The next slide shows you that, in fact, that people will not all be seeing those kinds of rate increases. The first arrow on the left shows that, yes, there's a rate increase for those people who stay on the same size can. If you're on a 95-gallon can and you, you refuse to move to a smaller can, if you really don't think you want to move to a smaller can, you're going to pay 32% more than you do under the 2026 projected rates. But if you do move from a 95 to a 65, look at that second arrow on the left across, you will actually save money. You'll save 7.5% or a buck and a half a month. So it, it's partly based on rates, but it's also, the bill is based on behavior and, and choices. And so the vast majority of households can make choices that save them money, and in fact, we do expect that the average household in the town, in the, in the city of Bloomington will actually save a little bit on their trash bills compared to what they would have under the 2026 projected rates with this new system. There are additional considerations or common questions that come up. One of them is, would this increase illegal dumping with, you know, was there too strong an incentive and might people, instead of going to a smaller can, show their frustration by illegally dumping? And what we, we did a survey of 1,000 households around the country that moved to pay-as-you-throw rates. We found that in the vast majority, there was no change in illegal dumping. A hard thing to measure, I'll guarantee you, but they reported that only about 20% of communities said that there was an increase in illegal dumping, and every one of them said it lasted about three months and then went away. You are, I wanted to note that your every-other-week recycling, you might say, oh, maybe we could get more recycling if we went to weekly, but in fact, I know that the system is every-other-week recycling, and I would just want to say, that is an optimized system. That is likely, that is the best system, I think, nationally, best practice, because if you, if you went to weekly recycling, you would get maybe one to two to three percentage points more recycling. Not a great deal, but it would almost double your costs. Cost-benefit-wise, it's way better to go about, to go through and make sure you're offering good organic services as well. Your system is optimized at every-other-week. Will this increase contamination in recycling streams? There's no clear evidence of that, but I'll note that pay-as-you-throw gained, gained popularity around the same time that the sort of single-stream recycling also gained popularity. There's not a, there's not strong evidence out there that it increases contamination. Contamination has been an issue with and without pay-as-you-throw, and you already do have some level of pay-as-you-throw. This is merely a change, an increase in the incentive. I don't see a strong reason where you already have that system in place, that there would be a significant increase in contamination. The next two questions are a little bit interrelated, but we like to keep them a little separate. What is the impact on large families? You know, you've got those large carts becoming more and more expensive. And what is the impact on low-income households? Well, let's keep them separate, because people kind of conflate them in their minds, but they are two separate issues. Low, you know, large families is, you know, those folks end up paying more for more groceries, more for more, you know, water use for more showers. And the question is really, is it, not is it fair for large families, but is it fair for small families, like the single-person retiree, to pay the same or to pay nearly the same as someone who puts out a lot of trash, and they put out a little bit of trash, and they recycle a lot? It's really, rather than look at the impact on large families, turn that around and also look at the impact on small disposers. This becomes significantly more fair to small disposers and gives them an incentive and gives them a reward for making choices that are in line with the policy you want. What is the impact on low-income households? Well, a number of, about 10% of the communities around the nation put in low-income rates under the, for these kinds of systems, or have special discounts. Cities, you know, do have a lifeline or something. But remember that these low-income households can also reduce by recycling and, and using smaller containers as well. You also had a study on the racial equity impact assessment and utility bill assistance that you're considering, and there's a utilities rate affordability task force that's undertaking a Phase II program in 2026 that all address this issue with those kinds of considerations in mind. Laura, is there anything you'd like to say more about the low-income households issue?
Thanks, Lisa. I think as, as Lisa mentioned, utilities is undergoing a rate affordability study with the US Water Alliance. So that's a task force that has completed its first phase, where they did some research and surveyed different community partner organizations on the impact of our utility rates overall on affordability. And we are just entering Phase II of that study, and the goal of Phase II is to take action and to develop more recommendations, recommendations to address rate affordability. I think some of the things that are being looked at include more robust education and outreach on our rates currently, making sure that all of our information is translated and, and really accessible for all of our residents. Another option is looking at more utility bill assistance. So these are all things that are currently being studied, and I think the goal of that task force is to develop those recommendations that would be shared with council in 2026. I also do want to note that VEAP are, was one of the partner organizations in that task force, and VEAP does currently have a utility bill assistance program, and there have been some residents in Bloomington who have utilized that in the past. So that's something that we can continue to promote. And then, as mentioned, we did conduct a racial equity impact assessment as part of this study last year. And as we looked through that, kind of as Lisa mentioned, this would be something that impacts all of our households within Bloomington, so it will be the same increase for all customers, and it would be, in a sense, making our rates a little bit more equitable, because it's going to be based more on what you're actually generating. We did take a look on the impacts to large families and low-income households, and it can be difficult to really understand what those impacts might be right now, but looking at census data, we know that there is about, let's see here, 24.3% of our households are families with children in Bloomington, and our average household size is approximately 2.4 members. So the majority of our households in Bloomington are not families. So that's something to kind of note as we looked at, look at the impact. So I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks. Other things that sometimes come up are questions about odors and, you know, that may, hopefully, you're already dealing with odors in the current, you know, trash and organics program and so on. There's no real change in, in what we would expect there, and you already have a bag program to deal with extras for those households that, that have that occasional party and so on. So your system is well-set up to, to address, to, to work within this kind of a, kind of a program. Ms. Horner, back to you.
Well, thank, thank you, Lisa, for the information and for presenting the updated recommendations. I just wanted to kind of briefly mention regarding timeline for these changes. Based on council's direction this evening, staff would then begin to work more with legal and utility billing and finance to bring back these proposed rates during our regular budget process. We would come back to council in October with these proposed rates, and there is a public hearing in November when they're officially, formally adopted. And also to allow time for outreach and communication regarding the new rates, we would be working very closely with communications to make sure we have a good communications plan in place, because it could be a quick turnaround if we just started in November, once those rates are adopted, to let residents know about the rates in 2026. So we'd like to be proactive and have many articles in the briefing up to that, kind of talking about these proposed rates, and do some kind of targeted communications to the communities that could be more impacted, so we can kind of target, we know who the, our large cart holders are in Bloomington, and make sure that they're getting more communications. So with that, we're seeking council's direction on these preliminary 2026 proposed rates that would incorporate that stronger financial incentive that was shown tonight, as well as adding that every-other-week garbage cart service level. So we would appreciate any feedback on this proposal this evening.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Dr. Skumatz, for your input on all this. And this is a very impressive, very robust and information and data-filled report that brings us to the conclusions that it's brought us to. And I know that there are plenty of members of this council that appreciate that kind of thing, so well done with that. I do want, have one question, doctor. On your, your slide where you were projecting the subscription levels, one of your risks that you listed was that the, if we were at our stronger reactions, the city revenue risk would be $347,000 a year. Assuming then you've also calculated the risk from the expected reactions, what, what might that be? What we might be, what might we expect if that would be the case?
I'd say that one would be zero, because you'd be charging rates that are exactly right to support that, that service-level distribution. So the rates are based on, on three, three underlying factors. The amount of incentive that you, the amount of incentive that you want to provide, the number of people on each can size, and then the total cost you're trying to raise, and the two, I think, and so the two, the first two, the, the rates that we char, that we projected, times the, you know, number of households, times the number of households on each can size, will raise exactly the amount of costs that, that you will realize for that, for that scenario. If, in fact, and that was, the balance subscription was 1.54 cans up, up at the top. If, in fact, we end up with the extra squishing and so on, you move down to a can size on the left that is 1.4-ish, and you see that the revenue risk there is $347,000 per, per year, or about a 9% shortfall. So if you, you know, this is the sort of, and if you end up at one point, if there was a 1.54 can size in there, you would see zero risk. You see that the risk is negative on one side and a positive on the other side of that, of that 1.5, and that's because that's the sweet spot of, of no risk.
Interesting. So just a difference of .1, 1, 1.4 is a difference of $347,000?
It is.
Interesting. Council questions, comments, thoughts on this? Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is a great table, actually. I appreciate this, because I think it'll help us knowing if we get to 1.6 or other things like that. But the, the, you had two questions, I think. One was, how do we feel about the rates? And then, how do we feel about the every-other-week? I am a huge proponent of every-other-week garbage. I think I have been since I got here. I think other folks have probably have been talking about it, too. So many seniors talk to me about, hey, I barely have, you know, a garbage bag a week. I'm at, currently by myself in my house, and I'm at one bag a week, so I'll be going to every-other-week garbage as soon as possible, and probably getting a second recycling can. So I'm your person, right? And I know I'm not like that for everybody, but I think the offset here for our smaller households is really strong, and I hope that, I hope that we can give the direction, and I don't know for offering direction, but I hope that we're able to give the direction of, yes, definitely, let's talk about every-other-week garbage, regardless of what the rate ends up being, because I think we, I, I don't want to assume, but I'm a big proponent, I think others on council are, of adding that into the mix. So maybe we can at least get that checkbox done tonight. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if that is part of the, the direction we want to give, but I'd be supportive of that. And then, in terms of incentive sizes, I think, I think this makes sense to me, and I think you're right, the education is going to matter on, on how it works. But, you know, with, with organics recycling, with our, and our, our regular recycling being, hey, throw as much of it away as you can, and you get to, to have an extra cart if you need to and everything, and we still don't charge you more, I really think that with a little bit of work on people's parts to like actually, you know, make choices about throwing things in can one versus can two, that, that this is, is going to be really good for the city and will help a lot. One of the things I didn't see in here, and maybe, maybe, Laura, you can bring this back to us, because I don't think it was related so much to what Dr. Skumatz was, was working on, was what we, what we project the, the diversion changes will be when we, when we do this, meaning how do we actually see the diversion to recycling into organics actually going? And I know I asked the question, like, where are we at with organics right now? I think we're a little above 30%, right? And I know we want to get to 70% or something over time, or 50% at a minimum. So like, how do we feel like this will also potentially move us towards those more sustainability-oriented goals, not just the cost-efficiency goals? Would be helpful to know.
Sure. Well, I mentioned there'd be about a 15% increase in diversion, and you can see that down, about midway down the table, just above that bottom dark blue line, going from 40 to 55%.
Oh, I see. Okay, so in that, in that middle section, so you're looking at additional 4.5% on recycling and, uh, new food diversion?
Yep.
Okay. And then diversion from source reduction? Okay, great. Thank you. That's super helpful. Do we know what that translates to, Laura, in, in terms of our sustainability initiatives and the, and the goals associated with that?
Councilmember DeLisandro, that's a great question. At this time, we don't have set sustainability diversion goals for the city of Bloomington. Hennepin County Hennepin County does have a goal to divert 80% of our waste by 2030. So that's kind of the goal that we're, we are following. And I know that as part of the climate action plan that's forthcoming, we'll be setting more targeted goals. But certainly, I think that these are achievable. And hopefully, we can continue to improve upon those through more of our, of our programs.
Right on. Thanks. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Rebus.
Just a quick comment. I'm all for that every other week pickup, but I would suggest keeping the same prices. I mean, as it is, I sometimes don't fill a can in two weeks. I just put it out so that it doesn't sit in there. And I have a huge can too, so I will benefit from this, but it's not just about me. But I would support the every other week. But I would probably think it would make sense to leave the rates as they are if that was the case, if it does help the city in any way. It's a good idea.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mu.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. Back to the risk table. How long does it take for us to see the reduction in the, the size, getting down to the 1.54? Because we said we're probably at like one, 2.2 right now, which is a significant, would be a significant drop. How long does that take? Because I'm assuming if we can continue to run in the twos for three, four, five years, we'd be charged, overcharging, there would be a surplus, right? So what, what's the time estimate of when we get to that level?
What we're hoping is that there'll be a, a citywide blitz in education program where people can see how big these cans are and that sort of thing. And, and they will be asked to choose their size. And the size, and, and that will happen, you know, in the rollout kind of timeframe that I think that the city is, that, that Ms. Horner is figuring out. And so there would be a fairly big move to it right away. Because, so that people will choose a new can size, those will all get distributed, and you'll be in the new, the new scenario. It won't be 100%. You know, roll out, people will, are usually allowed to do one switch in case they guessed wrong, you know, within so, within six months or something like that. But generally, it moves fairly quickly because, because there's a blitz to try to not let it go out in drips and drops, but get a new system going and new routing and all that settled right away.
So in, in your experience, is it usually like a year, two years till we get to like stability?
I would say you get the vast majority of it in the first year and then a bit more in the second year.
Okay.
And then there'll be adjustments over time as you refine your programs and that sort of stuff as well. But I think that's, that's what we would expect. It would, the majority would happen in the first year and, and a little bit in the second.
Okay. And my second.
If you do this sort of blitz, blitz, select a new can thing.
Okay. Second question, I think Laura Moore for you. Logistically, how have the conversations gone with our hauler consortium? Are they logistically set up? If, if we do a blitz and we do have the conversion in the first year, do they have enough cans, people, to make the swaps without delaying any, anything for residents if they choose to convert?
Councilmember Mu, another great question. We have continued to share with the haulers that we're conducting this solid waste rate study and what our proposed rates are. We just actually had a meeting with them last week and shared this. So I think our goal is to get pretty clear direction on support for this move and then to work with the haulers to give them what our, what this expected reaction is and what the strong reaction is to make sure that they have the cart sizes that they would need. I will say that our, our two largest haulers in Bloomington service cities throughout the state, and they have a pretty ample supply of carts. So it's not something that I think is going to be very tough for them to accomplish because we don't have our own city-owned carts. They can use their waste management carts that they already have stock of. So I, I think, you know, we don't have a confirmed yes, they can handle strong reaction as of today, but we have prepared them for this. And that is why we want to have ample time to communicate this to residents so we can try to set a timeline of, please let us know what your selected cart size is by December 1, so the haulers can be sure that they have what they need on hand for January 1 rollout. And I think in this, in the scenario where the haulers may not have enough carts, they would still honor the cart size that a resident had selected to downsize to for that price. And in that, in that scenario, we would communicate, your cart will be coming in two weeks. You know, the haulers are working to get carts, but the price that they have selected is something that would be honored on, you know, the date that it should have taken place. So we're working on, we're really working on that, and that's going to be the next step here after we get some direction on support for, for these rates.
Councilmember Lohman.
I have a brief comment and a, and a quick question. Just to confirm, I'll start with the question. The every other week is only solely that 35 gallon and not the other, other items. And I imagine that we, that we looked at those other ones and didn't see a, an advantage in trying to do those other, other types. So with that being said, we've come a long ways with this whole thing. And, you know, finally, we're able to get this thing done. I know I wanted to see this move a lot faster than this, but it really looks good what we have today. And I know that we had this body before, kind of, we were looking at trying to be more aggressive. Certainly am in favor of doing the every, every other week. And, and I'm also looking forward to being a little more aggressive with, with these things and seeing what happens when we do it.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep my comments very brief. I am supportive of the every other week for sure, and I am supportive of the rates, moving those forward. So I think it's something that we need to do. It aligns with our values, our strategic plan. You know, we set this direction several times over the past couple of years, saying that we want to do this. And so I would just say thank you for all of your, your work on it. It's really, really excellent. And then I would echo other sentiments that the community engagement and education piece will just be crucial and really important. So as much as we can help you with that too, please feel free to engage us in those efforts.
So I think you heard the council direction. I think the direction aligns with the two bullets that you have there, certainly the every other week. And I think there's consensus regarding the strong financial incentive between the garbage cart rates as well. And I will echo Councilmember Carter. I, I would start with the communications staff tomorrow. If we're going to head down this path, we need a plan in place as soon as possible and to start to really roll this out to people and have them understand it. Because as we saw, it's, as I said, it's, it's vigorous, it's, it's rigorous kind of thinking, but it does make very good sense, and I think it will benefit a good, good majority of residents in Bloomington. So. We're good?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I can't wait to call, I can't wait to call Eleanor. This is my, this is my neighbor Eleanor, and she's been asking me this every three months for the last three years. So I can't wait to call her tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice job, Scott, by the way. Our final item tonight is item 5.3, our discussion regarding our liquor licenses. Jamie Hansen, our city clerk, and Matt Brillert, also in the clerk's office, are going to join us this evening and talk us through.
All right. Good evening. We also have representatives from public health here. So tonight, we wanted to talk to you about some liquor licensing issues. The first item we wanted to talk about was our compliance checks. We have seen an increase in our compliance check failures. So just to explain the process a little bit, once per year, the police department conducts compliance checks using an underage operative at all the businesses that hold a liquor license. For the businesses that do not pass the compliance check, a police report is written, a copy sent to the city attorney, city clerk, and public health. Once the legal department receives the violation reports from the police department, the violation number is requested from city clerk's office. Packet is assembled with a letter, stipulation, and waiver of administrative hearing. This packet is sent out, and the business is given 30 days to respond. If a response isn't received or the location chooses not to waive their right to a hearing, an administrative hearing is scheduled. This process occurs over two months. We have seen an increase in our compliance check violations over the last seven years. The increase is in both the number of businesses failing and businesses that are failing for the second time. The number of the total liquor license in the city has stayed relatively the same, averaging around 130 plus or minus four. And now our representatives from public health are going to talk a little bit about public health impacts.
Good evening. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having us, Mayor, and council members.
Hi, good evening. Good evening. My name is Brittany Nguyen. I am the public health specialist focusing on health and all policies. And I am here to share the public health lens around the implications of alcohol compliance and what's going on in our community. So in 2024 alone, Hennepin County recorded over 48,000 alcohol-related hospitalizations with binge, with binge drinking being the top driver. That trajectory often begins very early on. According to our 2022 Minnesota Student Survey, 12% of 11th graders reported drinking in the past 30 years, and over half of those got alcohol from a friend. These patterns are revealing not just access, but also normalization. With, with that, research from the CDC and SAMSA has confirmed that early alcohol use dramatically increases the risk of binge drinking and long-term health issues such as addiction, poor motor control, cognitive impairment, mental disorder, liver, liver damage, and others. Alcohol compliance is a proven path forward, though. Evidence-based studies have showed that regular compliance checks and strong age verification policies significantly reduce youth access to alcohol. Every missed opportunity to check IDs or intervene in underage access contributes to this ongoing cycle. By enforcing laws and building community-wide accountability, we can disrupt this harmful pipeline, protect and drive down hospitalizations that strains, strains families and our communities alike. Thank you. And I'll pass it back over to the city clerk to finish.
Thank you.
So there are a couple of different actions that the city could take to address the increase in violations. We can wait to see what the impact of the, or the results of the 2025 compliance checks is. We could increase penalties or add automatic suspensions. Our state statute allows for up to a $2,000 fine and 60 days suspension per violation. Currently, we issue a $1,000 fine for the first violation, $1,250 for the second, $2,000 for the third, and a $2,000 fine and 30 days suspension for the fourth violation. One other option is to require servers to attend an alcohol service training. This could be required for all the servers that work at the location. It could be required for a percentage of servers. We could make the training optional and offer a financial discount on their license fee if they had a certain percentage attend. So we'll just dig into those areas a little bit more. We reached out to 77 other metro area cities along with St. Cloud, Rochester, and Duluth to see how we compare to what others are doing. This chart shows fines for first, second, and third violations. Bloomington fees are in orange, and then we averaged out the other cities in blue. And then in the next few slides, only the first, second, and third violations are listed. Many cities, as many cities revoke once they get to the fourth one, so the data was a little hard to compile. So this chart shows the percentage of cities that include an automatic suspension for the first violation. As a reminder, we don't suspend here in Bloomington until the fourth. For the first violation, 24% of cities have an automatic suspension, 52% for the second violation, and 65% of cities have a violation for the, or have a suspension for the third violation. And then of the cities that do suspend on that first offense, 19 of them suspended for one day, one was for two days, and five of them was for three days. For second violations, you can see it starts to vary quite a bit, but the most common was suspending for three days, followed by one day, five days, and six days. And then finally, for the cities that have automatic suspension for third violations, it varies even more. Suspensions range from one to 30 days, with three cities revoking at the third violation. The most common length of suspension was 12 cities suspending for seven days and 10 cities suspending for 10 days. And then when we talk about server education, there's a couple of different options. We would have identified approved courses for them to take. We would decide whether all servers or a certain percentage of servers would be required to attend the training, and it would be a condition of their renewal of their alcohol license for the year. Alternatively, training could be optional, and those license holders that send their servers to training would receive a reduction in renewal fees. The list of employees, their type and date of training would be submitted with their renewal paper and tracked by licensing staff. So just in summary, kind of some questions up there if you have some thoughts about what you would like to see.
I'm, I'm sure we, we do, but I, first I want to say a couple of things. First of all, the whole, what are other cities doing? That's, this council asks that every, on every issue. So I appreciate that you just got out in front of that and told us all that ahead of time. But related to that, I mean, the question that I had, looking at the number of increased violations, especially since 2018, my question is, why? And what are other cities seeing? Are we unique? Are we kind of an island that has seen that remarkable increase? Or is that happening everywhere? And why? Why has that happened?
Thank you, Mayor, for that question. So that data of violations was much harder to, to track because of all the different ways that the cities do it. And so I would have had to submit a data request for those. But yes, just in general, everyone is seeing an increase. They all asked for the results of, of my survey because they're like, we're talking about the same problems here. What we're hearing from businesses is kind of in a post-COVID world. There, there's higher staff turnover, people aren't staying as long. And so I, I would tie it more to like just kind of a post-COVID world than anything. But yeah, does that answer?
It, it does. And I, and I think that's, yes, that's kind of where I went as well. But it's still, it's such an increase that, because even a, a first-year employee or a 10-year employee, they, they know the rules. And so it's just, it's puzzling to me. I'm, I'm not sure. Councilmember Carter, and then Councilmember Lohman, then Councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the same question. I was like, why is this happening? So thank you for sharing that. Is there a, so I have a couple of questions. Is there an association between the number of days of suspension and then future compliance? Like, I'm surprised that we only, we suspend after the fourth citation. Did I say that right? Citation, penalty, whatever.
So I think, I'm just guessing here, but I think that things were just kind of status quo, and we weren't seeing an increase. And so we, you know, the, the, the businesses would prefer a fine over a suspension. And so I think things were working fine, and, and now it seems like they're not. So now we want to, you know, potentially the, the harsher penalties because they, they do have a bigger impact, I think, than the financial fine.
Yeah, absolutely. And then for the servers, training, education piece that you talked about, do we have the current capacity to do that, or would we have to add?
So it would, it would, it would be on the business to do it. What we have found is there are a handful of cities that require it. Some cities, their police department puts it on. Other cities, there's lots of alcohol-related associations that many businesses already have memberships to that provide these certificates of training. And I wouldn't be surprised if many businesses don't already send them there. So there is, we would be putting it on, on the business to use one of our approved trainers.
Okay, that's very helpful, and I definitely agree with that approach. And then would we just require that they would, like, send the certificates? Would it be for anybody serving alcohol?
So we, we could make, you know, that decision. Do we want, you know, all the cities that do it have different things? Like, one of them is 100% of your employees have to be within 90 days of employment. Other employees are, you have to send, or other businesses are, you just have to send one, you know, throughout the year. So there is a really big range in what you could do.
Okay. It does seem, it seems because of what you said about the post-COVID environment and lots of turnover, I mean, it seems it would, the best approach would be to require anybody who is serving alcohol to have to go through that training. So I would be supportive of that approach. I, you know, I do think, I mean, it looks like our civil penalties are already higher than average. And so for me, I feel like the suspensions are the next place to go to make a real impact. Suspending after four. Suspending after four citations, I mean, like, that just seems more than generous. And so I think like first time is a warning, second time is a day, third time, it's, you know, it just escalates from there. And then, you know, the last one, the discount, I don't really feel strongly about the discount. I kind of feel like people should, these businesses should just do it so that they don't fail their compliance. So that's where I'm at.
Councilmember, Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you. Well, I know I asked you this earlier, but, you know, it seems like this kind of correlates right with when we stopped doing our public shaming. So maybe that's the, no, I'm just kidding. So with that being said, so when we trained the, you know, the servers and those folks who are distributing the alcohol, what type of results have we seen with that?
So I don't have a lot of good data on that for you.
Or let me, let me, let me ask it this way. So, you know, you've asked a number of questions here. For those cities that are seeing a decline, what, what are they doing that's making it more successful for that reduction, other than the public shaming that I suggested earlier?
So I don't know of anybody that's really seen a decline. I think everybody is in similar situations right now. But the one thing that I have heard across the board is that when these compliance checks are failed, they're, it's not that they're not asking for the ID, it's that they're not able to like calculate the age. And so there, it's not that they're not asking, it's more of the, are they looking, you know, are they calculating the age? Are they, you know, I've heard of places that have the swiper and they'll swipe and they still serve.
Yeah, no, I was, I was shocked. We had a, we had a business that did that.
Yeah.
It didn't miss, I don't know how it could be possible, where you could swipe it, look at it, and miss it, but it happens. So I guess what I, my recommendation would be is, since I'm not an expert in this area, I would be looking for some type of, you know, give you guys the flexibility to try to come back with some type of proposal and test this out and try to see what would make sense kind of moving forward to try to gain, is it revocation? You know, is it public shaming? What is it going to take to kind of get us, you know, to an area where it makes sense kind of going forward? You know, I really like this idea of mandatory suspensions. I mean, the impact, though, of course, I'm concerned about because that could have an impact on a business, especially if you're a small business on, you know, in terms of your employees, how you're going to pay them, some of the other things we've done in the city. So I guess what I would-
Yeah, one second. The business wouldn't close for the day, they just wouldn't be able to sell alcohol. So say it was a restaurant, they could still have the food, they wouldn't have to close for the entire day.
It would have an impact on the revenues, right? That's, that's more so what I'm talking about. So I think in my, in my mind, you know, again, I would look to try to give you guys the latitude to try to figure out, you know, if we could experiment or try it out. I like the mandatory suspensions for longer periods of time. Is there, is there an upper limit on how much our civil fines can be?
Two thousand dollars.
Okay, so that's kind of the limit. So we're kind of already there. And then our revocation is at four, right?
A suspension for thirty days.
A suspension. When do we get to revocation?
Then we would bring it before council. We don't have, we don't have it set in stone. If we got to that point, then we would bring it before council for, it would be like after the fifth.
The fifth? Okay, that would be kind of when we would look at that. We don't have many businesses getting up to that, that fourth.
So we don't yet, but we are concerned about the, you know, the eight or so that had two, like, two years in a row, and we're about to do them again. So then it would be three in a row if those same businesses failed again this year.
And then my last concern about the survey results you did is the, trying to do a more comparison like a Minneapolis and a St. Paul, because those may have more of a mix of businesses that we kind of have.
Yep.
And again, I'm not asking for that now, but if you could kind of look at that, just see if there are any differences there at all, and that might inform the way that we look to try to make a solution, because we don't want to drive our businesses out of here, but we also want to certainly be healthy. So good luck.
Thanks.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So last year, in the summertime, when I was off, off of work, because I'd gotten laid off, I went to bartender school, and I did that training. So I know a little bit about it. The one we have here in Minnesota is called TIPS Training. It costs thirty-eight dollars to get that certification, and I still have my certification. It's renewable every year. So through September, I'm good to go. The, the point, I don't need a job, that's not why I'm saying that, but what I'm saying is, it's a, if ten, if ten servers were to get that TIPS training, it would cost the business three hundred and forty dollars, and that's half the price of their first violation. So in my opinion, it's, they're incentivized quite well right now to get their folks trained. I also know that there are signs in reputable places all over the city and in the state itself that say, you know, here's the, here's the date after which I will serve you and not before. And so the idea that somebody is looking at an ID and looking at the thing on the wall and not able to figure out if those dates are the same or greater, I don't have, I have a strong problem with that. So I'm actually of the opinion that a business that cannot run successfully under the license for which we give it to them don't get a lot of love from me. I, I'm sorry about that, especially when it comes to underage drinking and, in fact, you know, binge drinking and the deaths associated with drinking while, or driving while under the influence. I have very little tolerance for it. I have very little tolerance for alcohol these days, but that's a different conversation. That's my health journey. More to the point, I think I would personally say the violate, I mean, I think we are strong on the, on the fees. I would, I would say mandatory suspension after the first violation even. Because the only way that this is going to get changed, in my opinion, like, this is a behavior change, right? There are carrots and there are sticks. The carrot's not working, they're getting their money, that's not the problem. The stick is the only other choice that we have here. And while, you know, maybe it would be better if, if we did something else, I don't know. I would like to see candidly, oh, real quick, a question. You said first, second, third, because we only do these annually, I assume that, that, like, they could be violating this like multiple times in a year, and we would only catch them one time, correct?
You're correct, yeah.
So we don't have any kind of acceleration on that, that we could plan for. I propose to the council that if they are a violation, we go back in more often. Right? So they're on a list now, and they're going to get, they're going to get targeted for random tests more often. That would be something to talk to the police about, but that'd be one thing I think would would be cool to see as a way to kind of deter reoffenses. And then secondly, I would like to know personally, as they, as we do alcohol license renewals every year, I would like to see that listed on our renewals applications. If they are currently in violation, they've been caught in a violation, I think we should have that information here to make a decision about whether or not we approve their license again. That's our job. That's our job to keep people safe, and we don't get that information today. And I think it would be good for us to have that as part of, and I know that we've gone to kind of a two times a year thing, it's a pain in the butt for you guys to do the licenses. So I don't want to make more work for you, but I think us getting that information as part of the license renewal conversation is valuable to us. If we haven't in advance, one of us is, one of us can even call them and say, hey, here's your problem, right? Or whatever, we could do whatever we wanted to do there. But, but I would like to have that information on the going forward to make a decision about whether or not I want to support their license renewal, frankly. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I completely agree with Councilmember DeLisandro's point. I think it makes sense for us to start suspension at the third, have increased follow-ups, if you get one. Like, if you get one, and we come back in three months and you get another one, then like, we're escalating. But if you don't, then you're back in the year cycle. Because at this point, like, it's like when you're speeding. You get caught once, it doesn't change your behavior. But if you get caught multiple times, that's when it changes your behavior. So I'd like to see us increase that. I would like to see us incentivize as well. I, I would be more on board if we gave them an incentive, say, hey, you sent all your people to this training, we're going to incentivize you and reduce your renewal fees and not require you to do it, to give people the options. Because I just talked to another business owner, you know, last week, and they're like, it's really hard to do business here. And I think if we require it, it's another hurdle that we put into place that makes it more difficult. But if there's an incentive that you're going to reduce this, yes, it's going to cost three hundred and forty dollars to send ten people, but you have to pay for that hourly because you're, you're making them work, so it's more than three hundred and forty dollars. But if you, they can save it on the back end where their fees aren't as much, they're not paying those fines, they're not getting the violations, I think that helps with the stick. And so I think it's always the stick and the carrot at the same time, not just one or the other. So I am shocked that we wait till the fourth to do anything. And I grew up in Wisconsin. So to see that we're more lenient than my hometown is shocking to me. In Wisconsin, everyone knows our reputation. So, so those are my thoughts on it. It's, it's shocking to me because a lot of things that I read say that Gen Z's are not drinking, and this is showing the opposite. And so that's a really interesting trend, and I wonder if it's localized, if it's the Midwest or whatever it is. But continuing to follow through on that, because I know myself personally, handful of my own classmates passed away because of drinking underage. And so it is important, and when you're young, you don't think about it, but we have these policies in place, and so it's up to us to make sure that we're following through with it. So thank you for that, and thank you both for the two new public health folks coming to present. It's always nice to see new faces, so thank you for coming and sharing your information with us. Thank you.
So Councilmember Evas, would you like in on this? Otherwise, we have, I know, eight slides to go.
Yes.
And so why don't we get to those if we could?
Yes. And so then the next thing that we wanted to talk about was our liquor license renewals. The reason we're bringing them forth is just in an effort to get some additional tools to redo staff workload while holding license holders accountable to our ordinances. So for liquor license renewals, we currently have one hundred and sixteen licenses that expire June thirtieth, twenty-nine licenses that are three-two that expire on December thirty-first. Some locations hold more than one license. For the ease of the license holders, we plan, with that have more than one type of license, we're planning to switch to a uniform licensing date of June thirtieth in 2026. The renewal process takes four months. Alcohol and gambling enforcement sends their applications to the city clerk's office in March. City clerk staff assemble renewal packets, applications, and payments are due back by May first. City code requires application to be made at least sixty days prior to the expiration of the license. As applications are returned, background checks are conducted by, on all owners of the business by the police department. Insurance certificates are reviewed for proper coverage and fees are collected. Alcohol and gambling enforcement applications must all be signed by the police chief. Renewals must be approved by city council. Approved renewals then need to be sent to alcohol and gambling enforcement to be signed off on. Licenses for the new year are generated and sent out to license holders. Currently, there are issues with license holders returning their renewal applications on time. City clerk staff are spending significant time making daily phone calls to license holders to turn in their applications, insurance, and payments. Applications materials being received after May first is more common than not. The final application this year was received on June twenty-seventh. We had to drive it to St. Paul to alcohol and gambling enforcement so that they could sign it off so that liquor license didn't lapse. Processing liquor licenses is a big undertaking, and involves coordination between different agencies. We would like to implement a late fee that would assist us in enforcing the ordinance requiring packets to be returned sixty days in advance. Just a suggested amount would be three percent after May first and another three percent after June first. And then this, did you want to discuss that first before we move on to the partial payments, or do you want me to just continue and discuss?
Why don't you just continue? We can double back.
Okay. So then the other item is that we allow partial payments for our on-sale intoxicating liquor licenses. They are allowed to pay in two installments, four thousand eight hundred at the time of renewal in June, and then another four thousand eight hundred on December fifteenth. In 2024, approximately one-third of those license holders took advantage of the partial payment option. Of those, approximately one-third paid after that December fifteenth due date. Payments were being made well into 2025, with the final payment being made in May. Significant staff time was spent trying to collect payments. Legal in the city clerk's office spent time preparing for a public hearing to suspend the license of the location that paid in May. They eventually paid, and the public hearing was canceled. Other cities, eighteen percent of other cities offer the option to pay installments, eighty-two percent require full payment prior to issuing, issuing a liquor license. So these are some options to address the payment issue. We can continue to monitor and reassess. We can eliminate the partial payment altogether, or we can require full payment at time of renewal. We can offer the, offer the partial payment just the first year the business is open, or we could implement late fees for that second half of the payment. So any-
Thank you. My quick thoughts on all of those, first of all, how much work do we really want to do on three-two beer, knowing that three-two beer, I think we're the last state in the country that still has three-two beer? Is that correct?
It is correct. And if you speak to our friends at alcohol and gambling enforcement, it is not going away.
Really?
I know there, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there was a bill in the legislature this last session to, I think, increase that number slightly higher to a point where it would effectively get rid of three-two beer, where essentially your standard fare, light five percent light beer would become the new three-two. That bill did not move forward. So unfortunately, I guess I'll say three-two does still exist in state law, and of course, our ordinances have to reflect that. And specifically for the businesses, where you see the three-two license come into play is in two places. Three-two off sale, so your gas stations and grocery stores, because that is all they can sell under state law. And then three-two on sale. In fact, the businesses that don't have a full liquor licenses, the places that just sell beer and wine, they are required, because of the nuances, I'll say, of state law, that they are required to have both a wine license and a three-two on-sale license. So that's where that comes into play, and those are actually the two, the types of businesses that have to renew with us twice a year that we're planning to sync that up to make it a little bit easier on those thirty or so businesses.
Appreciate that, and I appreciate you explaining the nuances, because yes, that comes into play, and I do understand that. And it kind of leads into my second question. I get it, businesses, they've got a lot going on. I appreciate the work that staff does to get people into compliance and to bring them along and to collect the, the fees and so on and everything. But I do think there should be some incentive. I don't think you should be driving all the way over to St. Paul just to beat the deadline just so somebody's license doesn't lapse. I think if you do have to do that, there should be some financial nick to the, to the company that did not get their licensing redone in time. And I think if there is a, if they, if they, if we split, and I don't mind splitting the, continuing to split the license fee, I think that's a good idea and probably gives some people some flexibility. But I mean, if they don't, if they don't pay it on time or in a timely fashion, I have no problem with a ten, twenty, whatever you want to do percentage fee per month as an incentive, but also as a, as a payment for the time that you folks have to spend making sure that they come into compliance. So, and then not trying to be punitive there, but just trying to appreciate the work that you folks do to help businesses come along and to get them into compliance and do with the work that they need to do. But at the same time, I mean, it's kind of to Councilmember DeLisandro's earlier comment that you're holding a liquor license, you've got to, there are some things we expect of you, and you should be able to do those in a timely and reasonable fashion. So those are my thoughts, council. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with all of that. I think, I think, I think easing the burden on you all by setting, getting the schedule aligned makes a ton of sense. I'm sorry that, you know, at the state, we, they make it hard on us on a lot of fronts on this stuff. So my hope is that we can start to see some movement in the right direction at the state level on, on some of these, what I would call archaic rules. And then, and then in terms of the, the schedule, you know, we have, we have, you know, I think you guys have done a great job in the last couple of years of kind of trying to fix some of the things, places where we weren't necessarily being as proactive with our, our folks. You know, one of the good examples of that, as you know, Mr. Mayor, was just the, some of the sales tax challenges that one of our businesses had around, like, I didn't know I was supposed to be collecting taxes on liquor and whatever. So like, we are getting better at that. So the way, any way that we can help you folks get better by moving this stuff up, streamlining it, and then to your point, Mr. Mayor, providing, you know, positive or negative incentives, depending on the way you look at it, for compliance in that area makes a lot of sense. I also am not of the, I'm also of the opinion that, you know, again, you could, you could track those folks, and if they violate this too often, you know, you snooze, you lose, right? So maybe you have to close your business for a couple of weeks because you didn't get your act together. It's kind of not on us to do that. I think it would benefit them to go to the state and tell the state how their laws are making it hard for them. And I will always incentivize people to go to the source of their problems and try to resolve them, because the city oftentimes takes the burden of things that are not our own.